And welcome to the Wednesday, October 16th work session meeting of the Petfield Town Board. I'd like to call this meeting to order. Will the clerk please call roll?
Barry?
Here.
Lee?
Here.
Leanhouse?
Here.
Oaken Dennis absent. Tecklish?
Here.
Okay, next item on the agenda is the approval of the minutes. We have before us the September 18th minutes. Is there any discussion? A motion to approve?
So moved.
Second.
Vote, please.
Barry?
Aye.
Lee?
Aye.
Leanhouse?
Aye.
Tecklish?
Aye.
All right, first action item is the senior youth funding. Sarah can lead us.
So we have up on the screen some options. We did receive an additional $431,000 in additional ARPA funding from Monroe County specifically for youth and senior programming. So we did come up with a list of possible options on how to spend those funds. So those are rows three through 13. And then it looks like rows 20 through 26 is a possible combination of those items to arrive at that $431,500. So looking for input from the town board on how those money should be spent.
Quick question for clarification. Understood what you just explained, but as far as the dollar amounts, the estimated costs, I can see that some of the ones in the possible distribution, some of them are slightly different. Does that mean that we've gotten some good quotes or put more thought into it?
Yes, so Marco addressed the one.
At least for the pickleball, last time I had estimated that at $100,000. We did get a quote, specific quote back at 135, so that number did go up, but that is an actual bit amount number from the contractor.
Okay, that's what I was thinking, but I just.
Yep, so that was a, I estimated it last time, obviously I was a little under, but that is the change order quote they came back with. So depending on how the board wants to move on that, that's a number that could be used.
That's a solid number.
And then in response to that, we went back and looked at some of the other project costs. Originally, I think when we talked, when the town board reviewed this at last month's work session, we had originally said six potential structures for the shade structures at 21.5 each, scaled that back to five so that could, to accommodate the increased cost, now that's known for the pickleball lighting, if that's something that you wanted to pursue. And also scaled back a little bit on the parks, table seating and benches as well, because that seemed like the one place you could sort of adjust and do a few less if that was the direction you wanted to go.
Okay. Okay, so the one, the one thing on the distribution, the possible distribution of funds, I'm great with the shade structures, I'm great with the passenger van with the wheelchair lift, remaining library lighting replacement is great, the filtered water stations, but not so much, they're already at the library and community center.
Forgive me, that we needed to correct, that's going to be, I apologize, that's supposed to be updated to, just to say it's at, remaining.
It was added at Harris Wayland and added at Rothfuss and some of the other.
Right, Dolomite, like.
Yep.
Okay. All right. Same thing with the park table seating benches and the AEDs. Not too sure, I'm not too sure on the pickleball lighting fixtures, I think there's a need there, but I'm also concerned with the security, getting security cameras in at some of the locations, based on just some, an email we received today about more graffiti. So that kind of jumps up on my list.
Sorry, Sarah, can you give us again the total amount that was allocated, or I'm sorry, that was awarded?
Sure. I can't edit the spreadsheet, it looks like 431. 431. 712.
That was mine, if that's something else.
So I think, I'm trying to remember from last work session on this one, we had discussion as well, and I think we did in the interim, receive additional information on the passenger van, both with the wheelchair lift and space, as well as the 15 passenger only and the ongoing maintenance and insurance costs for those, and they were like less than $10,000 if I recall, right?
Correct.
So de minimis costs in terms of ongoing compared to all of the other new projects. So if we can just start from a place of agreement, I think we can try to whittle down, and I try to keep up with the cost. So we have to work backwards from the 431, 712, from the last work session. I do agree, we had said okay to the shade structures. Kevin on board with that?
Yes.
Okay, so can we move the 107, 500 to agreed upon? And the passenger van with wheelchair lift and space, I think that was agreed upon as well for our, both for youth and children, but for our aging population as well, weaving into our continued inclusivity and the senior programs, as well as support for aging that I know Supervisor, you're keen on as well. So is there agreement with the, that van with the wheelchair lift?
Agreed. That's very much needed, yes.
So thank you, Kevin. So we'll move that 100,000. I'm going to pause and ask for the 15 passenger only. I think we do have those currently in fleet, but with the growing summer programs and et cetera, and field trips and other deer programs. I know that there is a Finger Lakes Field Trip, I think, that we are hosting through the deer programs this month or next month, I can't recall, but did we want to add the additional passenger vehicle to the fleet?
I don't think so.
Okay, that's fine. Okay, so and then the remaining library lighting fixture, excuse me, replacement, that was pre-2025 budget, but we were holding off on the final budget for that because we knew these ARPA funds were coming. So I think we're in agreement, and Jeff, you had pushed for this last time?
Yeah, yes.
Everyone in agreement there, so we'll move the 39,000. So let's just take a math break really quick, so 207, 500 plus 39,000 brings a, oops, right? 207, 500, 7, 500 plus 39.
I'll get a sum.
Come on, Carrie.
Ready?
Oh no, it's, it's, I'm sorry.
Yeah, she's getting it, just.
I'm trying to do the subtraction, like it's 207, 539, I was trying to do the subtraction quickly. Okay, so we're about.
Got 185.
Yeah, a little more than half remaining, so.
Mm-hmm.
Or less than half. Okay, and then the filtered water stations, that was another point of agreement?
Yes.
Yep.
Okay, so we can move the 15 there.
170 now.
And then you had said part table seating, but I just, I don't think that was at the last work session, something agreed upon. So Kevin, Jeff, how do you feel there?
Yeah, was that specifically for like Shadow Pines, remind me what that, or no?
I think it was for multiple locations.
It was just.
I think there was some upgrades of stuff that was out there.
Okay.
I don't think that was Shadow Pines only.
Yeah, I mean, makes sense to me.
I'm okay with it.
Yeah, I'm.
Okay, so we'll move the 14 over, and then the AEDs are the, in case of a medical emergency with the defibrillators. Anybody opposed to adding those at all of our town facilities? And, okay.
No, okay.
So we'll add the 21,000, and then Carrie, what's our?
135, 212 is the remaining amount.
Okay. So I see pickleball lighting fixtures as a recommendation, and then does anybody want to consider others? Or are you okay with the lighting fixtures? I know that Linda, you had some concerns last time with using ARPA funds for additional outfits there.
Does anybody recall how much ARPA funds we used on pickleball from the first?
Yes.
We used 2 million overall, but we did, and much of the pickleball was funded through Senator Brooks' funding.
Okay.
So most of the pickleball was paid by that, but the 2 million was used by ARPA for all of Shadow Pines.
Yeah, correct. Jeff, did you have any other thoughts, at least from the top half of the spreadsheet?
Yeah, well, I'll just say with the lighting, I kind of went back and forth in my mind, you know, would it be good to have it for security reasons? But there is lighting in the parking area, which is great, but then I think of this time of year where it gets so dark early, I'm sure that, based on what I've seen so far, the park will get used with the lighting. And then, you know, we've done so much work already, I feel like we might as well finish it with the foundations and the conduit and everything in place.
Yeah, I think go ahead with the pickleball lighting.
I mean, I'm certainly not opposed, but I, I do kind of agree that maybe security cameras, because that did not get, we had additional camera needs that weren't fulfilled with the first ARPA allotment, so I would lean towards that. And then I would also lean towards the library furniture. The library request for the 2025 budget was high to accommodate for lighting, additional programming and furniture, and we did not cover that. And so I think the ARPA funding, it's good use for it, so.
Where are we going to be lacking in lighting? Do we know? Have we gotten that specific, or not, I'm sorry, with the cameras, where we'll be lacking in cameras?
Yeah, I'm not sure.
I don't think, I don't know if we've, if anyone's performed like a cross facility analysis to know where we have camera abilities and where we don't. I think for some of the locations, the lack of infrastructure, like in terms of connectivity and internet service, would be an additional cost, because they might not be fitted or ready to host that kind of a service. Unlike here at Town Hall, we have cable service, I think, I believe at Dolomite, do we have internet capability?
I know I've used Wi-Fi at both Dolomite and Harris Wayland.
Yeah, so I think at some of the park facilities, would not be an issue or concern, but I think in some locations where we don't have that infrastructure in place, there'd be.
Because, kind of going against what I already said, what I ultimately would like to see is for security to be able to watch remotely from very, you know, watch various locations, and particularly going back to, you know, the original purpose, I think that makes sense.
And be able to have the recordings when something happens.
Yeah, and it is concerning, you know, the vandalism that's been taking place. So, you know, if we're working toward the goal of that universal coverage and the ability for security to be able to watch it remotely, then I would, I would prefer that, actually.
So if I can make a suggestion, Supervisor, we've already at least identified, right, these six things. Can we, for the remaining 135, 212, can we ask for security to give us some additional information on their, where they would propose to add the cameras, and really to address the criminal mischief that's happened this week, to see if it's feasible in those locations? And then for lighting fixtures, because maybe we can attach the cameras to the lighting fixture, or a motion sensor or something where light would make better, you know, footage? And then Carrie, can we update this list so that we can remember next time?
Yes, I'm going to keep it.
Pickleball lighting.
So what I'm going to do is I'm going to just sort of, for the time being, I'm going to pull this out and, I'm going to delete this line, and this is going to be.
So Sarah, you have at least something to work with to get that, to get those rolling, and then we still have November and December work session to finalize before the end of the year.
Would the board, similar to what we did for the, our own ARPA funds, would the board like us to prepare a resolution memorializing this, these expenditures using the county's funds, and then come back and decide the remaining?
Sure, I don't know if it matters.
It's a good way also to document for auditing purposes, that the money's been decided before the end of the year.
Yes.
I mean, so long as we're all in agreement for these, then yes, let's keep it rolling. Okay, so it's pickleball, security cameras, and library furniture.
Are the remaining.
Are the remaining three, understanding that we won't have sufficient funds to cover all, but if we can get a better idea, maybe, from libraries, Sarah, if you wanted to outreach to them, to see if they can maybe identify.
They actually, they did, they sent me a estimate.
Yes, I understand that we have the estimate, but I'm saying, can they further delineate from the estimate? Like if they couldn't, if we couldn't replace all 50 chairs, are there at least 10 that are like on their last legs?
Absolutely.
Okay.
And I can work on the cameras, it's kind of a fluid thing, but I talked to Steve about this and Jim Crackman quite a bit, and I don't know exactly where things stands, but, but I know around the rec building, it doesn't have full coverage, and we're working towards that, but, so there is a plan that I can share.
And I think we should have a strategic plan regarding that, so that we make sure that we get everything covered that we need to, and that we have the remote access.
I agree, that makes sense. Okay, so with that understanding, I'd like to make a motion that the ARPA funds for these six confirmed expenditures totaling 296, 500 be prepared.
I'll second that.
Thank you.
Okay, vote please, Sue.
Barry?
Aye.
Lee?
Aye.
Leanhouse?
Aye.
Tecklish?
Aye.
All aye.
Okay, the fee schedule.
Okay. Every year, the town sets a consolidated fee schedule for the following year. Department heads were invited to submit any requested changes to their respective fee schedules. There were some minor changes identified. The request would be to memorialize the 2025 fee schedule at the November 6th legislative meeting, so fees for applications that will be considered in January can be published before the submission deadline. And so I can go through, there's not a lot of changes.
I'm sorry, I'm scrolling through quickly, I'll, I'll go back.
Yep, you stepped right there, perfect. So in red, we added the plumbing repair, replace new or repaired fixture, which is a $50 plus 10 for repairs. And patios above that was removed, and pavilion, I believe, was substituted, was in the notes.
Okay, so I'm not understanding with the plumbing repair, what was the change?
So it's, that line was added.
Okay.
So replace new would be the $50, and the $10 would be for the repaired fixture.
Okay, thank you.
Just below that, under miscellaneous and other fees, you have the patio and sports court line was entered with a fee of $100. The electrical line was just a reduction from $100 to $50. And then again, in the non-residential construction fees, the electrical was reduced from 300 Under fire marshal construction and special fees, decorative appliances, fireplace, wood burning, it's not a change in the fee amount, it's just a change in the permit description. The miscellaneous fees at the bottom, the residential was reduced from $100 to $50, and the non-residential was reduced from 300 to $100. And then the line under fire marshal construction and special fees, that line was just moved from residential construction to fire marshal construction. For recreation, the Shadow Pines Park open shelter was added to their fees, and then the Harris Wayland Park tier 3, $5 was added to the 45 to be consistent with pricing across the board, and the event vendor was increased $50. And I believe those are all the changes.
So I think when we try to set these fees, we try to be comparable to other towns as well, if not under, so can I just have confirmation again for the fee schedule updates for 2025? We've done the market analysis, and we are either par or below?
Yes, I know Alan's out on vacation this week, which is why he's not here to address, but he chatted with me beforehand to say that some of the reductions were made in light of the fact of, to reflect the fact that third-party inspections are conducted, and so didn't feel comfortable charging folks the fee that was in last year's budget, or last year's fee schedule, and that's wanted to reduce to bring it more in conformance with what other towns are charging.
Okay, so if that's the case, and I don't have any issues with the, with the fee schedule and the modest changes there?
I'm okay with it.
No issues, no issues.
No issues.
Okay.
I'm looking at you. Make a motion, if you'd like.
I'd like to make a motion that a resolution should be prepared for the adoption of the town fee schedules.
I'll second that.
Okay.
Hey, Barry?
Aye.
Lee?
Aye.
Leanhouse?
Aye.
Tecklish?
Aye.
All aye.
All right. Request for lead agency, Carrie?
Yeah, so this is for 47 Willow Pond, applications under review by the planning board currently. Both boards are going to be required to make a decision, and both boards would be required to prepare and conduct a seeker review. Because we have two boards in the town, even though it's not required, because it's an unlisted action, it makes sense to do a coordinated review for seeker. And because the lion's share of the impacts get evaluated as part of the site plan review, planning board has requested, or declared its intent to serve as lead agency in that action. And so if the town board is amenable to letting the planning board serve as lead agency, I would ask you to memorialize that in a vote here tonight, and then we send a memo to the planning board saying that you consent to the planning board serving as lead agent. You'd still receive material information as part of the seeker review, and if the town board had any issues or concerns, you could do your own, prepare your own memo in response to, as the planning board's navigating the process. But it's a good practice, it's efficiency in government.
And this is, we've done this in the past, where we turned it over to the planning board?
Very common.
Typically, where, whenever there's coordinated review, so sometimes it's required, sometimes it's optional. It's required for a type one action, and in every instance that that's happened, that I'm familiar with, the planning board served as lead agency. This is an unlisted action, so you could do it as a coordinated review, each board could do its own seeker analysis, but, you know, as Carrie said, for efficiency, you could.
Bye, Sarah.
You could just delegate it, allow one party to do it. And so the planning board has expressed a willingness to serve as a lead agency for, you know, the combined project. Since their project, their approval would come before yours anyways, so.
It doesn't forego your opportunity to review the project, to provide feedback or anything else.
Right, so they would be the lead agency, and it would still come to us for full review and a vote?
But not for seeker.
Not for seeker.
Seeker.
The special use permit comes to the town board.
Okay.
Seeker would be the environmental analysis that goes along with the project. So they'd be looking, doing the hard look and preparing part two and part three, and reviewing it. If there were concerns, or you had, you know, you weren't, you wanted to see what the information is, I mean, I think even as a.
So you're an involved agency, so you'd have the opportunity to provide feedback before they render a final decision on the seeker.
Yeah.
The seeker would also be, I mean, they're looking at the whole action, so they would look at what you, you know, what they would be coming to you for anyways, they're looking at the whole ball of wax.
And if it makes you feel any better, Doug and I would both be working on the seeker analysis, because we'd, I'd be looking at it from the perspective of the special use permit, and the things that you have to think about for that, he'll be looking at it from the perspective of site plan, and so we'll likely work together on preparing the part two and part three for the planning board's review.
Right, and then that was part of my question, is where does that expertise come from the planning board?
Yeah.
Well, there you go. And when I say we will still have to review, if there's any action on this that's required by the town board, we would have this to review.
Yes.
Prior to that.
Well, and the seeker analysis, the seeker process could be concluded before it comes to the town board.
Right.
And then you would just be noting that seeker's already been, you know, addressed and completed, and then move on, and you're able to proceed with decision-making. But if there's any issues or things that you're concerned about, you could certainly.
At the time?
Yeah.
Okay, okay. So we'll have purview, it'll be located somewhere that we can.
And I'll make sure we add it to the, I'll make sure it's someplace in a drive that you guys can get to it, no problem. Or, and, or just circulated via email when it goes around to the, as part of the planning board's job.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, so you have a motion?
If you're, if there's no, if you are amenable to the planning board serving as lead agency, then, then just a vote here would be all I need for the purposes of that, and I can move on.
Good. Go ahead.
Okay. I just want us to be very careful due to the sensitive nature of this project. You know, we've heard a lot about the concerns that are going on with this, and I just want to make sure that we really, really consider it well before we give up any purview over this, and maybe we would want some sort of final check before. What are your thoughts, Kate?
Yes, I'm sorry. You can tell we've now been working long enough where we can kind of read, read each other's thoughts, what I had whispered to, and did not realize I was whispering.
It's called a toddler whisper.
This is a real working class, if anybody's watching, this is true.
Forget a couple. So I mean, like the, the planning board, I think, you know, they, and, and our, our staff work so closely with them, and I think no one here is against like efficiency, right? Like we're on the same team, we support the planning board, planning board supports us, we're all on the same team.
Absolutely.
And so I think, so there's no hesitation with the coordinated effort and the collaboration and communication, like we're all for that. I think the hesitation that I was kind of hearing from Linda and then seeing it on Kevin was, Pete, you said before they render a final opinion, as an involved agency, the town can provide feedback or voice concerns, or try to get an update before a final opinion, is that right?
It depends on the timing, though, so I don't, you mapped out the.
Yeah, so I think, I mean, the way this would play out potentially is, and it depends on how, how quickly the planning board has information in front of them, they have their meetings are timed so that at, for example.
Typically every other week from you guys.
Except now in November, December, it goes down to one. So the, at the, if, if tonight, you wanted to say, yes, planning board serves as lead agency in this coordinated review, at their next work session meeting on the 24th, they would then just declare themselves lead agency, the plan would, they might have a part two and part three before them to review as part of that work session, that work session meeting at the planning board. Now whether they're ready to act on it and tell, advise or instruct Doug to prepare a resolution related to seeker, that we won't know until their meeting on the work session meeting on the 24th.
But I will say that typically, the planning board does not act on seeker before they do the, like, if they're going to, if they're going to authorize a chair to sign the part two and issue a NAGDEC, they do that the same night that they're going to approve it typically. So it's not like they're, the seeker all done, and then.
And then come back and vote.
Yeah, so it would be, that's something that, it's like, at the end, when they're ready to approve the whole thing, they do two resolutions effectively.
Yeah, one in front of the other, similar to what we do here at town board, where resolution for seeker happens, and then right after resolution for decision-making happens. So if there were things that you were concerned about, or issues, if you wanted to. So if there were things that you were concerned about or issues, if you wanted to share those concerns, we could certainly, you know...
So nothing right now, right? But I think what I'm hearing is for, an opportunity for a final check. So if we, I think we're all supportive of the coordinated effort for a planning board to serve as lead agency, but as the involved agency, if there's an opportunity where before the final opinion is rendered, can it become before the town board at a work session just for an update or in the interim if residents continue to, because we have all, like Jeff included, have received the resident concerns, can we get those regular updates and then before the final opinion is rendered, it just gives the town board an opportunity to say, hey, planning board, can you also consider this if you haven't already? Not trying to derail the process, but is the timing, would that, would that afford an opportunity?
I think from a timing perspective, that actually might delay the applicant, so it might be easier to keep it separate, if I'm being honest. So...
You do your own seeker review and they do theirs.
We could do separate seeker. We were doing that, thinking, you know, if the town, but if, it might be actually in the applicant's benefit, because if we're gonna tie the two boards together through seeker, then planning board's process is gonna have to wait for the town board to review seeker analysis, and that could actually work against the applicant, which is the opposite impact that I think we want to have.
So can the seeker review, though, because it's you and Doug doing a lot of that portion, can it not be replicated if we did it separately?
Oh, yeah.
Well, it certainly can, but you have to remember that the seeker analysis is gonna be a little bit different because you're, you're doing the seeker for the action, and so the action here is a special use permit, right? And that has, comes with certain elements that are gonna be looked at. And we can certainly also reference what's being looked at at the planning board levels as well.
There's a lot of overlap, though.
There is a lot of overlap.
And so this is optional to do a coordinated, so...
Might be easier to do it.
Just do uncoordinated, and that way each board does its own seeker analysis.
That, that's fine, too. Again, there was no saving of work. Both Doug and I are working on it together, so it's not like I'm getting, trying to get out of a seeker document.
Yeah, and I, I will say that for something like this, anytime that it has a potential for a big impact, that I would like to ensure that we're knowledgeable and fully aware.
Sure.
Did we, do I understand the boxes, the right boxes were checked? Did we really look into this? And I'm 90%, 95% sure you did, but it's that 5% that I always worry about, that, that I've said yes to something or have voted no to something because the information came to me late, or I didn't get a chance to review it at a certain time.
Sure, yeah, I think then...
Admittedly, I'm, you know, trying to navigate through, and I don't want to delay things, so...
Yeah, I think for that reason, again, when the, when the meeting dates line up, then it's fine, but if one's happening before and then the other one, it can be a little bit challenging, especially as we're navigating into the holiday season where meeting schedules... Yeah.
You could, but just do uncoordinated review. That way you reserve all of your, you know, bundle of rights, and they get theirs, and you don't have to, there's no harm in that.
Yeah, I'll be honest with you, a lot of town, like, that's typically how most, a lot of places will do it anyway. Each board will do their own review, unless there's a reason you have to. Like, when it's a type one, you have no choice. You have to do a coordinated review.
And sometimes when there's an application before the planning board and the zoning board, they will, that's an unlisted action, they'll sometimes do coordinated, sometimes they won't do coordinated.
Yeah, usually it's a timing thing.
If it's more complicated, they will do, they will typically opt for a coordinated review and let the planning board do it, to be honest.
They like to punt.
I completely believe in the planning board's ability to handle this. I completely believe in the, in the staff, the whole nine yards. My, my one concern is that we really want to make sure that all due diligence is done with this project, so I would be in favor of not coordinating.
Okay. All right, well, no discussion, further discussions in, and then you'll see a future seeker document.
Okay.
It's at a, at a meeting to be determined.
Okay.
Everybody good?
None.
All right, informational items, Carrie.
Okay, forgive me, I lost track of where we are.
Clark House, when you get there.
Oh, yes, thank you. So just wanted to give an update that for the Clark House renovation project, the town staff has received 95% construction document drawings from Colliers, that's formerly Bergman, for anybody watching at home. We're gonna be doing a final review internally, multiple departments. We're tagging in also the building department and Fire Marshal's office to make sure there's no surprises. And so it'll be staff from DPW, engineering department, myself, going through the documents to identify any final changes. And then at that point, about this time next month, three or four weeks from now, they would, Colliers would be assisting us in getting the bid document, big packages out, and we are anticipating having bid results back in mid-December.
Oh, great.
So the hope is we come to you at the work session scheduled for December to chat about that and see where we go from here.
It's exciting.
It is. Also, update is that all the certificates of appropriateness required for the project have been issued by the historic preservation board. So they are all set from that perspective as well.
Great, very good.
In continuing with Clark House related, Clark Road Barn, the, the town is awaiting the final report from the conditions assessment. We anticipate that, receiving that in short order. And so we went ahead and scheduled our next advisory committee meeting on October 29th here in the auditorium. It's scheduled at 5:30, so tune in from home if you're interested in seeing the results. We are going to provide sort of an overview of the, of the report, also plan on having the, just the report discussed at the November work session here with the town board. And the consultant is going to be able to be in attendance at that town board meeting, so he can address any questions you might have directly. When I sit, when we send the advisory committee report out to them in advance of the 29th, all the town board members are copied on it anyway, so you'll all see that at the same time. And then the consultant isn't available, the meeting of the 29th, we picked that based on this room's meeting availability and PCTV's scheduling. But he did indicate that if the advisory board committee wanted him to present, we would work to find a time to, for him to come in and chat with the members of that committee.
Great.
So, more to come.
And the November work session, is that just to get an update again, the emissions report?
I mean, we don't have to discuss it there. If there's no further questions or you don't have questions, we wanted to make the consultant available to the town board to direct, ask, answer questions you might have.
Because right now, we don't know.
We don't know, we don't, yes, exactly. Just for more details, I know.
Because I'm trying to recall from the charter for, charter, the, I don't want to call it admission statement, right, but, but for the advisory committee, like, the goals of that committee is, are to make at least two or three recommendations, right? And so I would...
Yeah, I think that, well, again, without knowing the full results of the evaluation, and I don't know if, on the 29th, if the committee is gonna be prepared to come to some conclusion or have an answer to the town board. So we, you're right, we could hold off on waiting until that, the advisory committee has a recommendation, is that what you're thinking?
Is there a charge for the consultant to come before the town board to further...
With that, in the, there are two meeting attendants at one advisory committee meeting, and a town board meeting was included in the...
In the estimate?
In the estimate.
So that was the only reason I paused. I didn't want to waste that consultant time, right?
Yeah, no.
Because we're being billed for it. So I would, I would prefer to wait until the advisory committee has a chance to digest and then make at least some skeletal recommendation, and then we can kind of have that recommendation and ask consultant, hey, what do you think about ABC? Or help us to better understand ABC. I would like to, right, otherwise we have to pay another à la carte fee for him to come, and I, right, I'd rather just hold either November, or, excuse me, after November.
Okay.
That makes sense.
Okay.
All right.
Yeah, that's mine.
All right. So we, we will stay tuned on sort of the next steps then here at the town board. Okay?
Okay. Next agenda item?
So the next one, just, these, I'll maybe just do them both because they're the same answers. Both the renewable energy system code, proposed code additions, those are under review by the EEECC currently. Hopeful that the modifications through the EEECC will be hopefully ready by their next meeting, and then we'll be able to bring you a draft proposed local law soon after, immediately after. And then the, the same thing with the local law to amend the environmental protection overlay district. The, I know that the EEECC is reviewing that and may make some, a final recommendation for a potential addition to the, to the draft code as it currently sits. So we're waiting on that as well.
And I want to thank the town attorney for meeting with the EEECC to address some concerns that they had. I think that was an important step.
Yeah.
Thank you. I think it was a good discussion, so I think they'll come back with some possible suggestions for some additions.
So...
Thank you.
Cool.
Progress is happening, we promise. We just, hopefully he'll see us at a future, future meeting.
Can I ask, on the, so we, at one of these meetings, we talked about the, some changes to the animal control. So we were kind of stuck on the provisions for the negligent owner, whatever the language was. And I still need to talk to the animal control officer to get his input on some of that, but I don't know. Are we scheduled to take that up at any point? I didn't want to mess up the calendar.
I don't know that we've put it out for public hearing.
Okay.
And so we can hold, because we have to have the, sort of a more finalized draft typically, so you let us, let me know.
I just wanted to make sure that the train hasn't left the station.
Okay, no, it has not.
Okay. Anything else? All right, we're good. So I'll adjourn this meeting at 7:12. Next meeting is November 20th, next work session. Have a great night.